Everyone, I'd like to call this the emergency meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. First order of business today will be the calling of the roll. Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the roll.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Beloga?
Present.
Mayor Bussey?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Lohman? I do not see him. Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Let the record show that six of the seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present, missing Councilmember Lohman at this time.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Lohman did indicate that his work schedule did not allow him to attend.
Yep, that's what I understood as well, and he would join us if at all possible, and I don't know if he's able to right now. So, thank you to the council members and thanks to everybody watching out in Bloomington today. As you notice, we are in masks here in the city council chamber. It's gonna be a change and something we're gonna have to get used to a little bit, but it is now part of the guidelines within City Hall for staff that are still working here that if they have business beyond their own desk, they're expected to wear a mask. So if they're headed to and from the restroom or sitting in meetings with other members, that a mask would be expected. And so we figured it was just appropriate that we'd also wear masks here at the emergency city council meeting. So if you'll see, if you'll notice, both the city manager, the assistant manager, the city manager and I are all wearing masks here in the council chambers, and that I expect will be the expectation going forward for the foreseeable future. So, we have one item on our agenda this afternoon. It's a public hearing regarding an emergency ordinance regulating the temporary creation and extension of commercial spaces. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just the quick history of how we came to be sitting here today, as I think most members of the public are aware, and certainly the council is. The governor last Wednesday, May 20th, provided the Stay Safe Minnesota Plan for allowing restaurants and bars to reopen slowly, and part of those guidelines included operations only outside of the restaurant. There's no dining that's allowed inside the premises. So, staff reviewed the governor's orders and believe it is necessary to put in place an ordinance that was going to address the expansion of commercial areas outside of those establishments, recognizing that the spacing requirements and the limitations on the number of people meant that there was likely going to be some encroachment beyond the premises for most establishments. And because a number of these establishments are licensed for on-sale liquor, we had to make sure that public safety is addressed as we consider how to allow them to reopen and to conduct business as normal, which means going beyond the defined premises with most of the liquor licenses. And we also have a number of situations, Mr. Mayor and council members, where these establishments do not own the entirety of their property or even none of the property where they operate. And so there has to be some accommodation within those shared spaces, especially with parking lots and sidewalks. And so, before I say anything else, I do want to say thank you to the staff because we had a day and a half to research these issues, prepare the ordinance, put out the packet. And our staff in legal, planning, building inspections, the clerk's office, environmental health administration were just amazing frankly, turning all this information around. So, real quickly, hats off to staff for doing that. So what's the effect of what we're doing here, Mr. Mayor and council members? What's in front of you is an ordinance that will allow for these establishments to operate outside of the confines of their building. There's a process that they have to go through. Staff's intent in putting this together, not just the ordinance, but also the process itself, was to make this as user-friendly as possible with the intent of getting these businesses in position so that they can open on June 1st with very, very limitation or at least impediment from the city of Bloomington as it comes to permitting. There is no fee that's attached to anything within the ordinance for reviewing their site plans that come in or any of the requests for expansion of the commercial space. That's an important consideration. We have looked at issues related to the parking and the encroachment into the parking. We are maintaining public safety. We're not allowing encroachment into fire lanes, but we are providing accommodations throughout the area. So we maintain access, but we also again try to facilitate this as easily as possible. And then there's a checklist that's been prepared for the businesses, so they know exactly what's expected of them. And to the extent that we will take these permit requests in and turn them around right away, I would say that there's a presumption of approval here in that, you know, once they satisfy the requirements on that checklist, we will work with the establishments to gain compliance, but we're going to assume that they are doing everything to stay within the rules here, and we're gonna do everything to make sure that that happens. So, we have our city attorney is on the line. We have staff from environmental health and planning, I believe clerk, and others that are available if you have questions. But this is relatively straightforward, and our intent is should the council approve this emergency ordinance, we would immediately contact all of our licensed liquor holders as well as all of the restaurants, which environmental health maintains a database, and so we have contact information either through email or mail, and if we can't reach those, we'll start making phone calls too. So we'll make sure that we're reaching out to folks right away so that they understand the process. So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd take any questions that council has, and then it would be appropriate to conduct a public hearing.
Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify something, and I had already emailed the city manager about this, but I've gotten a few questions from folks and just wanted to clarify that there are no fees associated with this expanded capability that we're not charging businesses anything to take advantage of this opportunity. That's correct?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Coulter, that is correct. There's no fee that's involved for site plan review. There's no fee involved for expansion of the commercial area. There simply aren't any fees attached to this.
Thank you.
And Mayor and members, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Manderscheid, please.
I'd like to just add that no fee applies to city fees. We're not, the city is not charging any fees. We don't have control over whether a state agency might require some sort of fee, but the city is not requiring any fees related to this particular permit.
Yes, and thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions on this. And I appreciate staff turning around some answers for questions I had asked earlier that showed generally that I think the approach will be to be as flexible as possible with our businesses, things like using restrooms, different ways of accessing outdoor spaces. We'll try to make it work for people as long as it's safe as, you know. In summary, what I heard, I just want to make sure that that was kind of from the staff side what the approach is.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Nelson, the answer is yes, that is what the approach is. We did have some clarification from the Minnesota Department of Health on several of the questions that council asked, and among those, and this is more for the public's interest, that the restroom facilities within the restaurants will be open, so people can go inside to utilize restrooms. Obviously sanitation, hand washing, those types of things are still necessary. That the operations like buffets are not allowed currently, and so any of the restaurants that have previously had buffets will not be allowed to do that. But that folks can go into the building for the purpose of using restaurants, but other than that, most everything will be outside. And we're trying to provide as much flexibility to the operators so that we can get through this period. We don't have an expectation of what the timeline is, and so we're gonna be working closely with them and also with adjoining properties as well. We recognize in some areas of town that we have different types of uses, so there may be residential uses that are close to some of these commercial areas. And so the addition of outdoor dining may somewhat increase the noise. One of the important elements in here is that any noise has to be ended by 10:00 PM. So if there's outdoor music or something along those lines that for neighboring residential areas, they don't have the addition of noise as a result of this. For the most part, we're gonna try to make sure that the businesses can do this successfully, recognizing this is a challenging situation for everybody.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to make sure people are aware of that. I'm sure there's interested parties watching this, trying to figure out how to operate their business going forward. With regards to the buffet, I know this isn't really covered in there, but I do believe there's one any diner that has provided a way for people to like check off what they want, and then someone could bring that food out to them. Would that sort of situation be something our staff would be able to look at so that buffet could open up and serve people slightly differently than they normally do going forward here?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Nelson, we can certainly look into that. Environmental health is gonna be the one that enforces that and provides guidance to the establishments, so we can see if there's somebody that's doing it in a different way, but I think what you've described is essentially server service. It's just that the servers are getting the food from a buffet that's laid out, so it's not that the rest of the customers have access to it.
Okay. And then I appreciated your comments on the permit with regards to the presumption of approval, because I do know a few cities have moved forward with similar ordinances that did not require a permit. And so I'm just, if you could just touch on what that would look like if somebody, say for example, got their information into the city on Friday, would they still be able to move forward on June 1st if the city hasn't had a chance to review it?
I'm gonna ask the city attorney to weigh in on that, both from the front end in terms of the, you know, our approach versus some other cities, and then on the back end in terms of issuing the permit.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, there are other approaches that have been taken that that are, what you have in your form before you is a hybrid of what we've researched and found be the case. If you look at the way the form was drafted, it's very much an on-your-honor approach. We want to see the plans. We want to understand. It's important that the police and licensing and fire know where certain activities are occurring for licensing and public safety reasons. And similarly with environmental health and planning. But if you look at the form, it's an initial here approach in that folks need to be cognizant and prepared to do what they're about to do. But if they submit their their form on Friday and they have, and they're able to initial all of the relevant boxes and collect signatures for the restaurant owner and the property owner, if that's a different party, then, you know, absent some sort of extraordinary concern, I would think that that would be possible for them to still open up on June 1.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification for people. My last question has to do with when this, because it is temporary, terminates. And according to section 16 of it, it terminates when the local emergency is terminated. And I'll be honest, I just have a little bit of a concern about that as opposed to maybe putting a year-end deadline or something like that. Because one, I don't know if or why we would extend the emergency after, I forget, I think it goes through June or July. I forget the exact date, but, you know, why are those two things tied together? Do they need to be tied together, and does that make the most sense?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Nelson, part of the authority for doing the emergency ordinance is that we have a locally declared peacetime emergency, and that's the same authority that the state has used for the actions they're taking. Our local emergency has been declared through June 30th. We will expect to get more direction from the state of Minnesota. June 12th is when the current emergency expires that the governor has declared. If we get past June 30th, you know, our emergency powers effectively terminate under the declaration unless we extend them. And I think the city attorney has some thoughts in terms of extending our local declaration in the absence of a state declaration, so this is one of those things that we're gonna have to monitor. And if the, if the if the environmental conditions change before our emergency expires, so before June 30th currently, and the restaurants are allowed to operate differently, and this ordinance was no longer necessary, then the city council can terminate the ordinance at that time as well. City Attorney?
Ms. Manderscheid?
Yes, I would concur. We drafted this language with an eye towards flexibility, as you've been told a couple of times. But I think it's important to know and acknowledge that there are ever-changing circumstances. And the Stay Safe Minnesota Plan that the governor released, was it 10 days ago or so, describes certain benchmarks in the process and phasing, but the further out phasing does not have dates connected with it. And the governor has indicated that his decision-making is led by what he is being told and the research and the data from public health. And so we wanted to draft something that would withstand some changes in the governor's orders in that if the governor, you know, on Thursday or Friday indicates that businesses can open to 50% capacity, or they have to ratchet back to 10% or something like that, we wanted to draft something that had some ability to withstand those changes. And so that's the needle that we were trying to thread here on this particular document. Similarly, with regard to that section 16, acknowledging that you know, there are ever-changing situations, and there are underlying basis of authority that come into play as to whether or not this ordinance will continue forward. So, just as a reminder, with regard to all of the actions that have been taken by this council with regard to the COVID, the ordinances that you've been passing can be rescinded at any time by resolution of the city council.
And Mr. Mayor and council members, again, with the local declaration expiring June 30th, we have a council meeting scheduled for Monday, June 22nd, and if it is necessary and appropriate to extend the declaration, that's the date when we would consider doing that.
All right, that's all my questions for now. I do have some more discussion on that matter, I guess, or more thoughts on it, but I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
And Councilmember Nelson, I just want to say I appreciate the fact that Councilmember Nelson actually brought this forward the first time that we had heard about it. I think through contacts or information, he gleaned through the Chamber of Commerce. So in addition to staff and their quick work on it, thank you to Councilmember Nelson for bringing this forward and moving this onto our radar screen. So, well done. I want the record to show that Councilmember Lohman has joined us, and so now we do have seven members of the city council here. And with that, I'd like to call on Councilmember Beloga with a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have my hand raised. You'll see that I just unraised it because I wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Nelson's bringing this forward at the last council meeting, which you just did. So, that and I had a few questions that were in parallel with what Councilmember Nelson also asked. So, no further questions on my part. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions? If not, this is a public hearing. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line who would like to speak to this issue?
Paul, this is Chris Wilson in the city council chambers. Do you have any callers on the line wishing to address the city council?
We don't have any callers over the phone.
All right. No callers, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no one coming forward electronically, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Made by Beloga?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Lohman?
Got a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Lohman to close the public hearing. No further discussion on this. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman? I saw his mouth move. Martin?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. Council, additional questions or comments or discussion on this? If not?
Mr. Mayor and council, oh, I said Councilmember Nelson.
Oh, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The only thing, like I said, I want to follow up a little bit on the termination timeframe and tying it to the emergency declaration. I think for the sake of a lot of our businesses within the community, having that uncertainty that this might go away in a month provides a disincentive for them to make some of the necessary investments that they might need to to implement this. I can also see a period of time in which there's a crossover where they may want to have and be allowed to have people inside of the establishment, but also in order to get as much revenue since they've been so impacted by this. Having that outdoor space this year would make, would help them through this situation. I mean, they've been you know, one of the industries that's been mostly directly impacted by this situation, and anything we can do to help them this year and provide some certainty that they could continue to have outdoor service if it makes sense for their business model, in my mind makes sense. And I would prefer to put a time and expiration, you know, at the end of the year. Obviously, I don't think they're gonna see people outside in the winter, but just to give them that certainty. So I just want to put that on the table and see if there's support from my colleagues on that, or if there's logistical reasons or legal reasons why we could not do that.
Mr. Verbrugge, Ms. Manderscheid, let's start with the logistical or legal reasons. Is there any reason why we couldn't do that?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm not gonna address the legal issue. Although, let me talk to the logistical issue. I think that we expect that's going to be the case, as Councilmember Nelson said, there's gonna be a hybrid at some point. As the governor and the Department of Health allow for indoor dining to resume, it's likely going to be, again, with spacing or capacity limitations. And so it makes sense that restaurants, to the extent they're able to do it, would want to maintain outdoor and indoor. I won't presume the the position of the council. From my perspective, it makes sense to continue to allow an expansion of the commercial area for a certain period of time until we understand how that, you know, plays out. I think the other logistical issue just has to do with how it impacts some of the other adjacent properties. So where some of these establishments are located in like strip malls and other places where they have shared parking, it's not expected that this is going to create a parking capacity issue right away, because obviously the parking is based on the number of people inside the restaurant. The outdoor accommodation is probably still going to be less than those people. So I don't think we're gonna have a parking issue right away. As we return to something that's closer to normal, if we're still allowing expanded outdoor while we still, while we have indoor, parking may become a problem. So we just want to be cognizant that that's an issue that we may have to work through. I don't think at this point in time it's fair to forecast that that should be a limitation, though. I think this is one of those things that we're gonna monitor to see how it goes. And again, we'll take the direction of the council on this, but I think we want to do what we can to make our businesses successful.
Agreed. Ms. Manderscheid, anything from a legal standpoint?
Mayor members, I believe that section 16 should stay the way it is. It's my recommendation that that be that way. I can appreciate the desire to have more certainty, but I just don't think that that certainty is really there in that the situation is fluid. I think that what we have before you for consideration is as flexible as possible. And while I can appreciate that there will be some investments necessary to pull this off for businesses, we're hopeful that they'll be able to do that with minimal expenditures, given the flexibility that we've crafted into this document. I would also add that there, you know, in addition to being flexible, as the city manager indicated, this is a very changing situation, and we we know that we have to be, we know that we want to be reasonable during this process, but at the same time, there are certain limitations. And even if we did put a date on section 16, the council could still by resolution rescind it at any time. So, I would prefer that section 16, and my recommendation would be that it stays as is.
Councilmember Nelson?
If that answers that part, I'd just, you know, again, open it up to my colleagues if there was any interest in changing that. You know, I'm in favor of this either way. I think this is a good step for our restaurants, our business community, absolutely necessary for them. I just, you know, as a small business owner, I'm very sensitive to making sure I have certainty when I'm looking forward and trying to plan, and this is a time of great uncertainty for our business community.
Council, any comments on this? Councilmember Beloga?
I would support to date certain into the fall. I would just be repeating what Councilmember Nelson has said about supporting our restaurateurs who have been affected so much by the shutdown, and even the limited opening is still going to continue that effect. And whatever we can do to support them is, that's reasonable to do. I support. Obviously, I don't think anyone is going to go and want to sit in a parking lot or on a grass area during the winter, so sometime in fall seems reasonable to me. And we do have an expectation that we're going to change the ordinance as other changes come through by the governor. The ordinance as it's crafted, I think the staff did a wonderful job of making it flexible because I expect to see a step up in the number of people, which will cause us to look at it again, being uncertain as to when that would happen. I just think that a fall date and I'd throw out September 30th as a suggestion, although I'm flexible with that.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not gonna repeat what Councilmembers Nelson and Beloga have said, but I think that is a reasonable thought process to put in a date certain. I think, you know, nothing is for certain. Nothing is a 100% certainty in anything that we do. But I think, you know, knowing that we're looking farther out than just the end of June, I think that that is gonna provide, however, you know, greater a degree of certainty, I think that would definitely be preferable. I, I think that would, that would definitely be preferable. I would also just add, and I, you know, like Councilmember Nelson, I'm, I'm going to support this either way. I think it's a, a logical and common sense thing to do. I just want us, I want to encourage us as we're thinking about responding to things moving forward, that, that we're also thinking about how we're supporting the folks who are, are working in these businesses and making sure that, that they can be healthy and, and do the things that they need to do in addition to the, the folks who own and, and manage the businesses as well.
Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Martin, you got to unmute for us, please. There you go.
Only been doing this for two months now. Yeah, I, I'm sure many of you saw the recent article that appeared in the Star Tribune talking to restaurateurs across the, especially with relating to Minneapolis and trying to figure out if it would even be profitable to open up under the current restrictions. So I, I would be in supportive of putting some kind of fall date on it, whether it's Councilmember Beloga's suggestion or another, just to provide a baseline of expectations and then how we step this process out moving forward. With the caveat, obviously, that following the governor's recommendations and any curveballs we see coming up. So again, thank you, staff and Councilmember Nelson. This is helpful.
Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to echo my gratitude and thanks to Councilmember Nelson for bringing this forward and the city staff for moving so quickly. And I just want to say that I am supportive of moving out the end date to a time in the fall, September 30th. Sounds good to me.
Councilmember Lohman?
Well, it sounds like everyone's spoken to that. Can we craft the, the language to do that? Or does the city attorney still have concerns about setting that as a date certain? If I could get that answered, otherwise I suggest we go ahead and try to amend this, this motion.
Ms. Manderscheid, thoughts on that? And if you were to alter this to move it to a date certain, could you give us some language to work with there?
Mayor members, I, of course, I can't predict the future with regard to what the city council will do or what the governor would do. But if the governor extends the peacetime emergency, the city council could similarly extend its peacetime emergency at that second meeting in June. And so that would push the deadline out as well. I think that that is a moving target. We did talk about in staff conversations about sort of the natural conclusion of this being winter. That said, business owners, as you all know, are very creative and, and who knows what will happen, what will be going on in the winter with regard to this pandemic and this virus. I think if I was going to suggest some sort of a alternative language, I think what I would probably recommend is just simply ending section 16 after the word resolution and taking off for until the local emergency related to this, blah, 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 is terminated. And then I would bring a council action, put it on before you, an action to rescind this particular resolution when you wanted to do it. That would be one approach. The other approach would be to say rescinded by the city council by resolution or until October 1st, 2020, whichever is sooner.
Mr. Verbrugge, you had thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I, I think the recommendation from the city attorney is a good one. I think the, the question that staff has is just the authority to continue to operate beyond having an emergency declaration in place. And with the state, I believe the governor can only do 30 days at a time. So the, the special session that we've been forecasting for June 12th is because the governor is expected to extend the emergency declaration for the state on that day. The way that it works is that the legislature has the ability to override the, the governor's declaration, but it requires both of the chambers to do so. The Senate may have concerns as they've expressed concerns. The House is probably likely going to go along with the governor. And so I would expect that there'll be another 30-day extension, but that gets us to July. So the only reason I point that out is our ability to, to extend our own declaration. You know, I think we have to track what the state is doing. We, we extended our declaration beyond the state the first time. So we certainly could do that again and just recognize that if, if the state declaration terminates, our authority for declaration likely terminates as well. So we'd have to rescind it no matter what. So.
So a couple of thoughts. I think what Ms. Manderscheid laid out, I do think makes sense. But Mr. Verbrugge, what you just said also makes sense. I think we, we can extend this as long as we want, knowing full well that if the state repeals the emergency declaration, then we are going to be forced to repeal this declaration. But I think it's a worthwhile, it's worthwhile to move, move forward. As some folks have stated, it, it gives restaurant owners a little bit more flexibility, probably some more time. And frankly, those of you who are thinking that just isn't going to go into the winter, you've never tailgated before, clearly, because this could very easily, I think, go into November and even in December with just a little bit of creativity. So I would be supportive of, of a September 30th understanding. And as long as we all understand it full well and, and the restaurant owners understand it full well, that if the, the legislature, if the governor rescinds the state emergency order, that this will have to be rescinded as well. And I think if we just go forward with our eyes wide open on this, I think it's possible we could do that. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you. If, if there is no more discussion, I'd be willing to make the motion.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Beloga, tell yours.
I move to approve the ordinance, an emergency ordinance regulating the temporary creation and extension of commercial space as related to the COVID-19 global pandemic. And amending, excuse me here, amending section 16 of the proposed ordinance to read in the second line and shall remain in place until September 30th, unless otherwise rescinded by the city council by resolution or until the local emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic is terminated.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Nelson. Ms. Manderscheid, are you clearing that language there?
Yes. If, Mayor, if you are right with it, I would like to repeat it back into the record, especially helpful for the recording secretary.
Very good. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Section 16 would then read, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon passage as permitted by section 3.09 of the city charter and shall remain in place until September 30th, 2020, unless rescinded by the city council by resolution or until the local emergency related to this COVID-19 pandemic is terminated. Is that accurate, Councilmember Beloga?
It is. Thank you.
Sounded what I, sounded like what I heard. So we have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Nelson to adopt the resolution as amended. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Beloga, summary publication?
Move for summary publication. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Lohman for summary publication. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Resolution, or the, the summary publication passes 7-0. With that, we have completed our agenda for our emergency meeting on this afternoon. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Martin.
Motion by Beloga, second by Councilmember Martin to adjourn. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye, with thanks to the mayor for making this a very efficient meeting.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Thanks for staff for pulling this together on very short notice. Thank you to our council for coming together on short notice. Greatly appreciated. And looking forward to seeing those outdoor seating areas at our restaurants here in Bloomington. So thank you all very much. We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.